Good evening. I would like to call Monday, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two council meeting to order. Clerk Jones, I believe you would like to make some comments regarding the link for this meeting and other expectations.
Yes. Good evening, members of the, of the audience. Your mics will be muted, so for audio quality, if it is your time to provide public input, you will be asked to put your name in the chat along with your address. You will be called on during that time. Whereas for time for public input, you will be given five minutes to speak at that time. If you would like to speak during privilege of the floor, again, put your name and your address in the chat box. The council president will call on you, and you have three minutes during that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Disrespectful, rude, or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. I was hearing feedback every time I talked, I'm sorry. Disrespectful, rude, or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech and their actions, as well as verbal attacks on any person may result in the individual without notice forfeiting the remainder of his or her allotted time. At this time, we would welcome and have our invocation by evangelist Mary Winters, Pentecostal Cathedral Church of God in Christ. Welcome.
Maryelle Winters, two thirty-two Westwood Lane, South Bend, Indiana. Almighty God, we thank you for this day, this time, this hour that you have given us, each one of us. We thank you for life, health, and strength. We thank you, Father, for the ability you have given each one of us to perform our daily activities with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. We thank you for giving us our daily bread. We ask now that you forgive us of our trespasses as we forgive those that trespass against us. It is our prayer that you save the unsaved and that you all, return all backsliders back to you. We need your help now. Help your children that are in harm's way, all that are downtrodden, depressed. Deliver us from the evil one that is trying to kill, steal, and destroy he who is making this a cruel and perverse world in which we live. We invite you into this room. You are welcome here. I ask that you bless and show favor to each one of these individuals serving on the South Bend Community Council. Father bless community council member Pastor Kenneth Lee, Brother Henry Davis Junior, Sister Sharon McBride, Brother Troy Warner, Brother Eli Wax, Sister Sheila Nogowski, Sister Karen L. White, Sister Rachel Thomas Morgan, Sister Lori K. Hammond. Surround them with your love and protection. Continue to be with them always, giving them the spiritual ability to reason together and to make the right decisions, not only in this meeting, but in future meetings to come, those which will involve this great city in which we all live. We thank you, Almighty God, in advance for hearing our prayer and granting our prayer on this night. Be with us all now and forever, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you so much. At this time, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Clerk Jones, could you read the roll, please?
Yes. Councilmember Davis.
Henry's here.
Councilmember Lee.
Present.
Councilmember Warner.
Present.
Councilmember Wax.
Present.
Councilmember White.
Present.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember Hammond.
Present.
Vice President Nogowski.
Present.
President McBride.
Present.
Nine present.
At this time, will we have a report from Subcommittee on Minutes for March eleventh and March twenty-eighth?
To the common council of the city of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the March eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, and March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two minutes, and found them to be correct. Therefore, these minutes are recommended to be approved. I would like to make a motion to accept the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes for the month of March the eleventh, as well as March the twenty-eighth.
Has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried. There are no special businesses at this time, and no reports from the city. Now I re- entertain a motion to resolve into the Committee of the Whole. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been motion and seconded. Clerk Jones, could we have the roll, please?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can do it by acclamation. All in favor for moving into the Committee of the Whole?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried.
Good evening. The Committee of the Whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading and public hearing. I wish to share with you that the bills that will be given a second reading and public hearing have been given a first reading and set for a committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation of the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be on time. Clerk Jones, could you give Bill zero-nine dash twenty-two a second reading?
Yes. Zero-nine twenty-two, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at twenty-four thirteen Prairie, Councilmanic District Number Six in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Is there a committee report?
That came before the zoning and annexation committee this afternoon and comes before us with a favorable recommendation.
Is the petitioner present? I ask that you state your name and address and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Good evening, Council. Joe Molnar, Property Development Manager, offices on the fourteenth floor of the county city building. Before you today is a rezoning for property located at twenty-four thirteen Prairie Avenue. Trying to get the screen to share here. There we go. The petition in question is the northwest corner lot at the intersection of Olive and Prairie Avenue on the southwest side of the city of South Bend. It consists of a couple lots that border Prairie and Olive, and then one lot to the northwest. Currently on site, it is all zoned S-one suburban neighborhood one for primarily single-family use. It is the last remaining portion of the intersection that has not been zoned for commercial activity. To the south, you have a property zoned C commercial. To the southeast, you have property also zoned C commercial. And then directly east, you have properties owned NC Neighborhood Center, which is a more urban, a commercial and mixed-use zoning classification. So it's the last portion of the intersection that only is single-family housing allowed. Here is the lot as it currently looks today. It's mostly vacant. There is one remaining house on the subject property. And here is a site plan submitted by the petitioner to give an example of what it might look like. A convenience store in the northwest portion of the site and then gas pumps along Prairie Avenue. It was the opinion of staff that rezoning the property to C commercial will allow for commercial growth along Prairie Avenue. This is an intersection of two major corridors in the city, and typically when you have an intersection of those two major corridors, it is zoned for commercial uses. This makes it a logical node for commercial activity, provided the site does meet all proper buffering. There was concern from staff that proper buffering takes place both to the north and to the west to protect that single-family neighborhood, and we think that has been achieved through their current site plan. The developer has also committed to upgrading Victoria Street here up to C commercial standards, so putting in curb and sidewalk because the street currently now would not be able to handle commercial traffic. With that being said, ensuring the property does not encroach into an established residential neighborhood, it was the opinion of staff that it should go to the Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation, and it comes from the Plan Commission as well to you with a favorable recommendation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and the petitioner is present as well.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions of the petitioner? Since there's no questions from the council members, at this time, we'll go to the public hearing portion. Oh, I'm sorry?
Hi, Steve Ruby, three fifteen West Jeffon Street. Work for Abbot Marsh Consultants representing the petitioner. As was stated before, they're looking to zone this commercial. This is the last remaining corner, as they said, and by joining these lots, they will be allowed to use this corner as their C store, convenience store operation. So they see this as a valuable asset within the community and neighborhood and see potential business coming to the area because of that. So, any questions?
No questions? All right. At this time, we'll go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill zero-nine dash twenty-two?
There is no, no one from the public virtually expressing interest to speak in favor of Bill zero-nine dash twenty-two.
Clerk Jones, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition of Bill zero-nine dash twenty-two?
There is no one expressing interest to speak in, in opposition of Bill zero-nine twenty-two as well.
All right. If there's no questions from the public, the public hearing of Bill zero-nine dash twenty-two is now closed. Councilmembers, would anyone like to make any statements?
No.
All right. I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill zero-nine dash twenty-two.
I'd like to make a motion to send Bill nine dash twenty-two to the full council for passage. Second?
The motion has been, there's a motion and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, please call the roll.
Yes. Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President Nogowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
All right. Bill zero-nine dash twenty-two will be sent to the full council with the favorable recommendation. All right, now we will hear Bill twelve dash twenty-two. Clerk Jones, would you please give twelve dash twenty-two a second reading?
Twelve dash twenty-two, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, to vacate the following described property, north-south alley between North Mead Street and North Kaylee Street, from West Keller Street to Marquette Boulevard.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair, that come, came out of the Public Works and Property Vacation Committee with a favorable recommendation to the Committee of the Whole.
All right. Is the petitioner present? I ask that you state your name and address and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Chair, if I could interrupt. The, the petitioner called in earlier between the committee and the full council meeting asking when we anticipated getting to the second reading because we had a truly unique experience with the past, the last bill where there were no questions and no comments by any council member. I informed the petitioner that it would probably be seven-thirty before we got to Bill twelve twenty-two, and she is going to, she plans to attend virtually. So I would suggest that someone make a motion to advance eighteen twenty-two for a second reading before twelve twenty-two.
No move.
Second?
All right. Clerk Jones, will you call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President Nogowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
All right, so we will come back to that one hopefully at seven-thirty. All right, let's go. Next one is Bill eighteen dash twenty-two. Clerk Jones, would you please give eighteen dash twenty-two a second reading?
Eighteen twenty-two, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, establishing Juneteenth as a designated city holiday and amending Chapter Two, Article Eight, Section two dash one-twenty of the South Bend Municipal Code to appropriately increase the total number of designated holidays for officers and employees of the city.
All right. Is there a petition present? I ask that you, wait a minute.
That came out of Personnel and Finance with a favorable recommendation to the Committee of the Whole.
Favorable. All right. And we do have a, a petitioner present. I ask that you state your name and address and give us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Absolutely. Good evening, Council. My name is Case Gergli. I am Mayor Mueller's Chief of Staff with offices on the fourteenth floor of this building. It is my honor to present Bill eighteen twenty-two to council tonight. This ordinance is requesting that we amend the South Bend Municipal Code to officially recognize Juneteenth as a official city holiday. This day is rich in history, and last year was declared a federal holiday by President Biden, so we are hoping to follow in his, his footsteps and follow that precedent to discuss the, the process of how we're going to achieve this. So this, the ordinance in front of you, just to clarify, is requesting that we increase the number of city holidays from nine to ten. If council chooses to pass this ordinance tonight, the next step is to present this to the Board of Public Works, which will set the actual holiday, which the intent is to, to recognize Juneteenth as a, a city holiday. We will then follow up with council with a resolution, kind of acknowledging the completion of that process, and the hope is that this year, Juneteenth will be recognized as a official city holiday. So, so this calendar year. I do want to acknowledge a question that we got in committee about the potential budgetary impact of, of this ordinance and this change, and according to our estimates, so obviously for salaried workers, there wouldn't be a financial component. There, there would be a slight, you know, productivity impact, which I, I do acknowledge. And then there, as far as the financial component, we're estimating the impact to be about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, which would account for overtime and holiday pay and that, that type of thing. So with that, I will open up to, to council for questions.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions for the petitioner? Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
Thank you. Thanks, Casey. So this is a paid holiday for full-time hourly workers, I guess we'd classify them as.
So hourly workers, I know if they work on holidays, they're given, I think, I believe, paid for the holiday and then time and a half, but I, I will confirm that.
But if they don't work, it's paid regular time as a holiday?
I believe so. Actually, I'm not sure. I will confirm that.
Could you find out?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes. Rachel Thomas Morgan?
Maybe just to follow up on this to clarify, this is a paid holiday.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. That may clarify. The, the question I've asked in committee, I want to ask on the floor tonight as well. Could you remind us how many holidays the county employees have?
Yes. So to my understanding, the county currently has fourteen paid holidays, where the city has nine paid holidays, and this request is to increase that to ten.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. If there's no other questions, at this time, we'll go to the public portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill eighteen dash twenty-two?
There's no one from the virtual public that's expressing interest to speak. Let me see. Wait, someone just popped up, so let me see.
I, I think it's. I think it's Latoya Green.
Latoya Green. Lat- Latoya Green. Okay, she popped up. Latoya Green, are you wishing to speak in favor of Bill eighteen twenty-two, making Juneteenth a holiday for city employees?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes. Can you, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes. Latoya Green, ten twenty-eight Ebling Drive, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one five. On behalf of the South Bend Chapter, Indiana Black Expo, I am speaking on behalf of our eighty-plus members that we have. We have celebrated Juneteenth annually for over twenty-plus years in the community, celebrating the, not only the history of Juneteenth, but also the African-American community. And so being able to reckon, have this holiday recognized on the federal level last year was truly an honor for us, especially to be able to get this, like I said, final recognition. So we are in favor of this being a holiday, recognized as a holiday for city employees. One of the things that we did want to stress is that we encourage for it to not only be a day off, but a day on. So to be able to volunteer in any local events that are taking place, something that we've had every year at the LaSalle Park, but just allow for it to be an opportunity for volunteerism, and like I said, not to have a day off, but actually a day on in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else looking to speak in favor of, of Juneteenth, of Bill eighteen dash twenty-two?
There is no one else from the public expressing interest to speak on this bill?
Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition, whether in the chambers or online?
There is no one online wishing to speak in opposition of this bill.
At this point, the public hearing on Bill eighteen dash twenty-two is now closed. Councilmembers, would you like to make any statements regarding Bill eighteen dash twenty-two? Councilwoman White?
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. I would like just to state that I support Mrs. Latoya Green's comments and in support of Bill eighteen dash twenty-two. As she has stated, this community over twenty-plus years has always had programs and activities in recognition of this holiday. And I was very excited when our president in two thousand and twenty-one made this a national holiday. And I'm very pleased that South Bend is following suit. I can recall the work that had to be done to recognize the late Dr. Martin Luther King's Day as well. And so again, I would encourage all of our citizens to partake in all the activities that will be held within our city. And it's a time to recognize some past struggles, but it's also a time to recognize the progress that has been made.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir. I, um, I, um, thought about this, and I, I'm going to support it, but I, I want to point to a couple inconsistencies on how I have been thinking about this holiday. I didn't, never knew about a, um, Juneteenth. I didn't know what it was. I mean, I used to go to the park for the, um, the pomp and circumstance, the partying, the, the storytelling that took place over at LaSalle Park. But I had no idea what Juneteenth was, and so, and this is recent. This is, you know, this, this is nothing that's years off. This is recent. But what I do want to say is since I have understood it and I do understand what has happened, I do want to point out the fact that although President Biden was able to make this a holiday, federal holiday, there was some drawback. The drawback was that African-Americans in this country are still doing poorly. African-Americans in this country have a high instance of, like number one in every category that you can name that is bad. So when we talk about progress, we have to really point out what progress is and has been for us. I'm not saying that in contradiction to anyone's statement. I'm saying that because that's my statement. Here recently, as we are, you know, celebrating this being an official city holiday, this council did pass a resolution for Indigenous People Day as well, and we still haven't seen that happen. But even more so, here recently, we've seen reports back from the EPA about Bex Lake and that area being contaminated, but not as contaminated as it used to be, but kind of safe now, but still, you know, pretty bad. And then really, really horrible history behind it, and we're talking about black people. We're not talking about anyone else. We're talking about black people. And so it's great to have an idea that, you know, we can celebrate the, the end of slavery, but it should be coupled with and should also be celebrated if we can see a brighter day within the African-American community. We're talking about affordable housing. We're talking about better schools. We're trying, right now, we're even talking about a school being closed that's predominantly African-American on the west side of South Bend. And, and so when we are celebrating the fact that we're free from slavery, we still have to remember that, that the work that is ahead of us is yet undone. And the progression that has sort of taken place really hasn't happened because we're seemingly still fighting the same battles. So I just wanted to put a spotlight on those things because if we are going to celebrate something, let's celebrate the actual win of a better quality of life here in South Bend. And we have that ability as elected leaders of the city. So who, whoever builder this is, I don't, I'm not sure who builder this is. Casey, maybe. I, I'm not sure who builder this is. Thank you. Appreciate it. But the numbers speaks for themselves. Last week, there were three murders within one week. I think everybody was black. Right? So the school that's talking about being closed, that's black. All of this despair, the, the anguish, it's usually colored in black. So let's remember that we have work to do. Yes, we can celebrate it, but we have a tremendous amount of work to do.
Thank you, Chair. I would just like to say that I'm in support of the bill and emulate Latoya Green's comments about it's a call to action as well. I've been a part of the activities for Juneteenth for over twenty-some years and grew up out at the Charles Black Center. So I've been very active and familiar with the activities and church services out there as well as other activities that I've been hands-on involved in. So I'm excited about the mayor bringing this bill in front of us for acknowledging it as an official holiday. We have struggled for a long time and still have a lot of struggles to do, but any step that we have made in especially acknowledging the African-American community and allowing us to now have it as a celebration, paid day off, because I know for years, we've been taking it and eating a benefit time. But now we have an opportunity to celebrate it and have it taken off without city employees having to use that day for their personal time to celebrate. So thank you so much for representing the mayor's office and bringing this bill in front of us again.
Anyone else? I would just like to say again, I, I am very grateful that this is going to be a paid holiday for city employees. County gets fourteen. We're going to have ten. Just a brief history of, of Juneteenth in eighteen sixty-three. The Emancipation Proclamation is what freed the slaves. But it wasn't until eighteen sixty-five, June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, where soldiers went to Texas and, and declared that two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand enslaved people were freed that day. And so that's where Juneteenth comes, and that's where the settlement of... And so that's where Juneteenth comes, and that's where the celebration is. And again, with all of the things that have happened, I know that South Bend does a great job of celebrating the history and the heritage, and so I'm very much in support of us receiving this holiday. And as it, as, as Latoya Green said, it's not a day off, it's a day on, and so it's a great way for everybody to engage in the conversation and actually, uh, look at where we've come from and where we need to go, and work together so that we can continue to make this a better nation. So I'm very much in support of this. All right, I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill eighteen dash twenty-two.
I would like to make a motion that Bill eighteen dash twenty-two be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second. All right, the motion, there's a motion and second, Clerk Jones, please call the roll.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
All right, Bill eighteen dash twenty-two will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. All right, did our people from, uh, Bill number?
Yes, they're in.
They're in? All right, is there a committee report? Or do I, do I have to have?
Have a second reading.
Okay, Clerk Jones, will you read, um, Bill number twelve dash twenty-two?
Yes.
One more time.
Twelve twenty-two, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana to vacate the following described property, North South Alley between North Mead Street and North Kaylee Street from West Keller Street to Marquette Boulevard.
All right, is there a committee report?
Yes, there is, Chair, um, this was in the Public Works of Property Vacation Committee, and it was given a favorable, favorable recommendation to the committee of the whole for passage.
All right, is the, is the petitioner present? I ask that you state your name and your address and share with us key points regarding the bill that's before us.
Good evening, council, my name is Regina Williams Preston, I live at eight three eight North Elmer Street. Uh, we're here today on behalf of the Far Northwest Neighborhood Association, and we are requesting this alley vacation, uh, in order to build four affordable housing units uh, on Mead Street in our neighborhood. Uh, it's an exciting project, we've been working on it for a couple of years now. Looking forward to be able to bring this, uh, much-needed, affordable, beautiful, brand-new construction to our community and make sure it's available, uh, in order to prevent displacement. We're looking specifically to identify folks who can purchase it, that, who are currently living in South Bend and maybe even currently living in our neighborhood, possibly as renters. So, um, we need to have the alley, we're requesting the alley be vacated so that we can, some of those units, we're looking to have a curb cut on the front. The existing zoning does not allow curb cuts where there is a through alley, and so we are looking to have that vacated. Currently, that, what would be considered an alley is not, um, a throughway. Uh, it's been grown over for many, many years, uh, some of the property owners have already actually put up cement blocks and barricades, um, there's also bushes growing where the cars would normally pass through. Uh, so it's been maintained for years by all the surrounding, uh, property owners as if, uh, it was already part of our property. So we're looking to just simply make this official. Uh, another key point, uh, there is an easement there, there was one question from committee members about how do we ensure that once residents own the property, that they don't fence it off and block access, but there's an easement because their utility lines back there is electrical, so we're not allowed to completely block that off, so that will be open.
All right, council members, do you have any questions for the petitioners? Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Regina. Can you tell me what the parking situation is for the folks that live in this block between Keller and Mead and Marquette? Are they parking out front, have they already put in curb cuts for themselves with driveways? What does that look like?
This is, uh, an old, well-established block within the neighborhood, and there are currently, um, a stretch of habitat homes on the east side of the block. There are older homes on the, uh, west side of the block, uh, the northern half, and all of those, at whatever point in time, they all have curb cuts that were actually most people then, so people park in their own driveways. There's no parking, I, I never see anyone parking on the street because they all have driveways.
Okay, that answers my question, thank you very much.
Anybody else? If not, we're going to go to the public portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of, of Bill twelve dash twenty-two?
There's no one from the virtual public that is expressing interest, wait a minute. We have Jordan Geiger, Jordan, are you speaking in favor or in opposition?
I'm speaking in favor of it.
Okay, so we have, um, Jordan Geiger is speaking in favor. Jordan, if you could, uh, state your name and your address for the record, please?
Yeah, Jordan Geiger, four two four South Michigan Street, uh, unit six sixty, South Bend, Indiana, four six six zero one. Um, I just, yeah, I just wanted to speak in favor of, um, of the ordinance, and I've been following the Far Northwest Neighborhood Association for some time now and am fairly familiar with the project, I know they've put a lot of work into it, and so I just wanted to speak on the record in favor of it.
All right, is there anybody else that wants to speak in favor, or?
There is no one else that is expressing interest to speak in favor.
Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
There's no one, uh, expressing interest to speak in opposition as well.
All right, at this point, the public hearing on Bill twelve dash twenty-two is now closed. Council members, would you like to make any statements at all? Councilwoman Karen White?
I just want to, um, thank the Far Northwest, uh, Association for their commitment and dedication to bring this project to the point that we have before us. As someone has stated, it's been a long time coming, and the work that they put in to that area of our community is greatly needed and much appreciated. So just want to thank them for staying focused and their dedication.
Anyone else? Council, oh, Council President McBride?
I'd just like to say congratulations to the petitioner, this has been a long time coming and a great day. So congratulations for, um, getting this far on the project and, uh, the best, and can't wait to see the end result of it, I yield.
And then I would, anyone else? I would like to say that before I became a city council member, I was, uh, a member of the Far Northwest Neighborhood Association, and, you know, they went through a lot of challenges and actually met at my church in order to organize, and they have been such a agent of change for our neighborhood over on, on that side of town, and, um, this project is something that is going to be very impactful for units of affordable housing, it is a big deal, and it's been a lot of work. So thank you all for continuing the work and the vision, and we look forward to, um, the next, next steps in bringing this to fruition. All right, I will now entertain a motion for Bill twelve dash twenty-two.
Move for passage, I'll second.
All right, there's been a motion and second, Clerk Jones, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hammond?
Excuse me, point of order.
I need to move it, I'm sorry, to be sent to the council, full council, with a favorable recommendation.
And I'll second.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
All right, Bill twelve dash twenty-two will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. I will now entertain a motion arise from the committee of the whole and report back to the full council.
So moved, second?
It has been moved and second, uh, let's, let's do affirmation, uh, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, the motion carries.
Thank you. The full council is now back in session, this portion is of our meeting is where bills are given a third reading and action is taken regarding bills that were heard during the committee of the whole. Clerk Jones, will you give Bill nine twenty-two a third reading?
Nine twenty-two, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at twenty-four thirteen Prairie, Councilmanic District Number Six, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you, Councilor Lea, is there a recommendation for, from the committee of the whole regarding Bill nine twenty-two?
Yes, Bill nine dash twenty-two comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill nine twenty-two.
I'd like to make a motion to move for passage.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Clerk Jones, will you call the roll?
Um, Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bill nine twenty-two has been adopted. Clerk Jones, will you give Bill twelve twenty-two a third reading?
Twelve twenty-two, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana to vacate the following described property, North South Alley between North Mead Street and North Kaylee Street from West Keller Street to Marquette Boulevard.
Thank you, Councilor Lea, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding Bill twelve twenty-two?
Yes, Bill twelve twenty-two comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill twelve twenty-two.
I move for passage.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Clerk Jones, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bill twelve twenty-two has been adopted. Clerk Jones, will you give Bill eighteen twenty-two a third reading?
Eighteen twenty-two, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, establishing Juneteenth as a designated city holiday and amending Chapter Two, Article Eight, Section two dash one twenty of the South Bend Municipal Code to appropriately increase the total number of designated holidays for officers and employees of the city.
Thank you, Councilor Lea, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding Bill eighteen twenty-two?
Yes, uh, eighteen dash twenty-two comes from the committee of the whole to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill eighteen twenty-two.
I move for passage, second.
Clerk Jones, will you take the roll?
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bill eighteen twenty-two has been adopted. At this time, we will move to resolutions. Clerk Jones, will you give Resolution twenty-two dash seventeen a reading?
Twenty-two seventeen, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, calling for the cooperation of the city of South Bend, the South Bend Housing Authority, and developers to create, fund, and implement an initiative to remove barriers to affordable housing in South Bend.
Thank you. Parliamentarian, do you have any comments?
Yes, excuse me, this resolution was, uh, heard in public hearing after committee, uh, presentation on April eleventh. Therefore, it's, uh, only for council vote tonight, no public hearing.
Thank you. This time, I will entertain a motion.
I move to reject Bill twenty-two seventeen.
I second.
Who seconded that? The motion on the floor to reject Bill twenty-two dash seventeen, Clerk Jones, will you call the roll?
Point of order, I would like to have a call for discussion on the motion at this time.
I'll open it up for council discussion since we have an opportunity to speak.
So I think we, we've had this bill brought to us, uh, two weeks ago. Um, the folks from the Housing Authority showed up and spoke against that bill. Uh, it was tabled two weeks ago and asked for a two-week extension to make some modifications. Those modifications have not happened, uh, and again, we thank the, that folks from the Housing Authority Board to come in opposition to this bill again, um, and I think, given that, there's been time and you've, this has not been done efficiently or effectively, and so I, I think we should just, uh, end this and be done with the bill, thank you.
There any other comments from the council?
President McBride, I wish to make a comment, just briefly, um, I reiterate what my, what council member Warner said. Secondly, I just want to say, we've had this discussion before on council, if we're bringing bills before one another, that there's a level of due diligence and conversation that needs to happen with entities that are named on the resolution. Um, so, and that level of due diligence didn't occur, uh, with this particular bill.
Any other comments from the council? Councilor Davis?
Sure, and I would like to, um, respond. The words that were used to describe its inadequacy or, um, whatever else was said. This particular piece of legislation or this bill or resolution, as you may call it, was a continuation of what this council had passed over a year ago. It wasn't aimed to discredit any entity, including the folks at the Housing Authority, but it was something to progress the discussion that all of you unanimously voted for. I don't know where the hiccup came in at, or where the change of understanding of what this is came in. I, I don't know where the heat is coming from, to be honest with you. This council voted unanimously for a resolution to do work with the South Bend Housing Authority. And let's not be, um, let's not misunderstand that this council, um, still presides, although that, that, that piece of land over there is federally, uh, supported, you have to understand that, uh, the mayor appoints that board over there. So that's still city-driven. The ordinance that was put forth back in the se, I think it was in the seventies, I can't give you the exact date, came from this city council. So in fact, your job is on paper as a support to the South Bend Housing Authority. As a matter of fact, the city of South Bend has already given the South Bend Housing Authority eight hundred thousand dollars of American Carers Act money to support the redevelopment. So I don't, for the, for the life of me, I do not understand what the smoke is about. Maybe it's the presenter, you know, maybe it's something personal going on here. But it's only to further along the discussion about affordable housing, the need for affordable housing. No one said anything when, uh, Mayor Pete knocked down seven hundred homes, mostly in the second district. No one's really said anything about what this is going to look like in the second district when it's redeveloped on Western Avenue, if or when that does happen. So whatever ought you guys have with me personally, whatever I've done to you, I'm sorry, I don't understand it. And, and I don't like it, this is becoming part of the culture of this council. We're wrecking the opportunity to develop, we're wrecking the opportunity to support this community properly, we're wrecking the opportunity of having great personal relationships and working relationships. We're wrecking the opportunity of having great re- personal relationships and working relationships with each other. I've never been a part of anything like this before, uh, competed all my life, college athletics, never been a part of anything like this before. So again, if I've offended any of you by trying to represent my district properly, to bring something to the table that makes sense for this, uh, community, my fault, but not really, that's my job, so. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Councilor Lee?
Yeah, I, 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 I hear what you're saying, uh, Councilman Davis, and I think what the issue has been was that, um, when the organization comes and says that this bill that is not going to help anything, they, we've already have something in place. Um, I, we had a neighborhoods, uh, meeting and, uh, the city talked about their collaboration and working with the Housing Authority and, and all of that, so, um, you know, I, and then the two-week extension was, was given and, and the work didn't get developed, so that's really the issue, it's not a personal thing, it's just that we, we got to pass good bills and, um, that is the work that we have to do, so. You have to look at all of the factors of the people that are involved in it and, uh, and, and when it's something that's, that's, that's going to work, then that's, that's, that's when you, you get the votes, when the work has been done and, and the people have been contacted and, and we, we, we've been asking for opportunities to have discussion and, and do good bills so that it doesn't have to be a mess on the floor. And so I, I don't think it's, I don't think anybody here is, is targeting you, I think is, I think is that we're, we're, we're looking for a level of, of, of service to allow these bills to be good bills. And when we have the people here who this will affect say this is not going to help us, in fact, it might hinder us, then we have to take that in consideration.
Sir, this piece of legislation is non-binding, so it doesn't impact anyone negatively. It's for the council to develop a larger discussion to progress the conversation that you unanimously voted for well over a year ago. I think we are missing the point.
Well, thank you, Councilor Davis, I'll move on to, uh, Councilwoman Niskoski.
Thank you, Madam President, um, this was brought to us about a year ago and we all do support affordable housing in our community. And we have had presentations by the administration about their work that they're doing with the Housing Authority. Um, Dr. Lambert has been very, um, um, detailed and clear about the process that, into which they're going to be undertaking. Um, from the discussions with the developers to the discussions they're going to have with the residents, about what they're going to be doing about relocation. And then once they get through the process, so that is clearly understood by the residents, then they will go on to put together a number for what the building would look like into which the city of South Bend, um, and the administration will be then considering the amount of money to help support that initiative. Um, so I think it's been explained to us more than one way here. And, um, it was pretty clear to me when Dr. Lambert, uh, said that this was a very pointed toward the Housing Authority and it was basically telling the developer what they could and could not do. And then to give it two weeks and to come back before us again, um, I mean, we, we all acknowledge here, including Councilman Davis, that we support affordable housing. This, this bill is just not ready to come before us and if it's not ready to come before us, it needs to be voted down.
Any other comments? With that, we have a motion on the floor to reject Bill twenty-two seventeen, Clerk Jones, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White? Aye, is, I'm sorry, I want to make sure.
They voted to reject it, that was the vote.
Okay. Aye. Okay. Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Um, as I stated before, I was hoping it could be tabled for two more weeks, so, um, nay.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Nay.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Bill twenty-two seventeen has been killed. Rejected, rejected, thank you for that, thank you, that's a better word, thank you, thank you for that.
No, that's your word, that's what you said.
No, no, I, no, I said that was a better word.
What, killed?
No, when you said rejected, I said.
That's what you said, you said killed.
No, no, I did, but I thought you said rejected, so I said, no, that's a better word.
No, I didn't say anything, but that's what I was saying earlier about it being personal, because those are personal words.
It's not personal towards you.
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay, we'll move on to Bill twenty-two nineteen, Clerk Jones, will you please read twenty-two nineteen?
Twenty-two nineteen, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a resolution of South Bend Redevelopment Commission to amend the boundaries of the River East Development Area and approve the amended and restated development plan for the River East Development Area.
Thank you. Is there, entertain a motion, oh, we have a presenter here, Mr. Corcoran, there you go, I thought I saw you leave. You snuck back in on me.
That's right, um, is the mic on?
Yes.
Okay, uh, my name's Tim Corcoran, I'm the director of planning for the city of South Bend with offices on the fourteenth floor of this building, the county city building.
Excuse me, it doesn't sound like your mic is on, um. Can you try it again?
Good, all right.
Yes, there you go, thank you.
My name is Tim Corcoran, I'm the director of planning for the city of South Bend with offices on the fourteenth floor of the county city building. Uh, thank you very much, councilmembers, for, um, uh, letting us present to you this evening. Uh, tonight, I want to talk a little bit about a adjustment to the River East Tiff District. Uh, we're proposing to, uh, adjust the River East Tiff District, um, uh, which I will get into in a minute showing the, uh, the adjustment area, but the purpose of doing this is that by adjusting the Tiff boundary, the city will be able to collect incremental tax increases, uh, from this area to help fund future priorities and planning initiatives within the River East Tiff, Tiff District. Such priorities may include infrastructure, including streetscape projects, some of which are currently in the works for LaSalle Street, Colfax and Mishawak Avenue. But also, uh, projects and infrastructure projects within the expanded area as well. Um, we know there, there might be some need to look at Van Ness and Charles Street within the adjusted area based on new developments that are happening there. Uh, the increased revenue can also go towards things like community assets of Sites Park, uh, East Race, Riverfront Parks and Trails, and the Zoo, all of which are in the River East Tiff District. And also potential development projects, uh, of which there are currently, uh, none in the process of going through, uh, any developer agreements, but it does allow us to help incentivize, uh, new development projects in the River East Tiff area and in the expanded area. So the map before you, uh, the blue area is the area that is within a Tiff District in South Bend. And the orange area in the upper right is the addition that we're proposing, it's approximately forty-seven acres and represents point one seven percent of the total Tiff District. Zooming in a bit, we can see that area, the adjustment area, which is bisected by State Road twenty-three and is within, uh, the boundary of Ironwood Road, Edison, Twickenham, and Dun Road, gives you kind of the, the general area. The River East Tiff is defined by the blue area east of the Saint Joe River and the River West Tiff to the west of Saint Joe, of the Saint Joe River. And, um, the red area is the, the city boundary that you can see, um, and this is right on, along the edge of the boundary. Zooming in even further, these are the exact parcels in the, uh, the adjustment area. So some things to note, the area is forty-seven acres, there are eighty-eight parcels with fifty-three unique landowners. And one of the questions that we had earlier today in committee was when the Tiff District expires. Confirm that's twenty thirty-five is when, um, the majority of the River East Tiff will expire. There are few parts within the Ri- uh, the River East Tiff that will expire a few years later, but the majority of the River East does expire in twenty thirty-five. The blue area, the blue line represents the city boundary as well. There are, uh, a couple of developments that we know are coming. And these, uh, developments will be part of a fiscal impact analysis that is being done by Baker Tilly. And we can get into a little bit of that in a moment. But one of those developments that you're well aware of is the Turtle Creek Redevelopment Site. Uh, that came to council, uh, late last year, um, for, um, a exception for group housing. Uh, the Irish Quarter, which is currently under construction right now, this is a mixed-use development project, primarily, uh, residential apartments, but with some retail on the ground floor, uh, along Charles Street and State, State Road twenty-three. And there's another commercial development to the east of the, uh, recent Drive and Shine Development, um, also by Haji Turani. Uh, part of it is a quick-lube facility, although the details of this development are still in the works and it has yet to go through plan review. So there are some elements that are still being, uh, worked out for that particular project. But this area also has a lot of areas that, uh, were developed, um, in the sixties, seventies, eighties. Uh, we've seen a lot of interest in this area over the last couple of years, uh, especially, um, with, I think, the Mango Cafe Site or the Irish Quarter, as well as the Mulligan's Project, which is, uh, on the corner of Edison. I think people are going to start to see and perceive this area in a different way and see it as, um, valuable areas that they may want to look at redevelopment. So we have had conversations, um, very high level with people, uh, regarding the Campus Court Project, which was initially going to be tied into the Turtle Creek Project, but is not now. But that shows that there is the potential for people to purchase the site. Uh, there isn't a, uh, active development project that we know of for this site, but I would just wanted to like bring these ideas forth to council so that you can start to see the things that we start to see. Uh, the Commercial Strip at the corner of Van Ness and South Bend Avenue, again, when some of the, uh, changes to the zoning or some variances that were granted for development projects nearby, the landowners have started to get interest in what they might be able to do with their property long-term. And so there have been a very few conversations, but without any details of what those projects might be. But again, this is about getting ahead of some of those projects. Other places could be the Salvation Army, again, an older building, things that are coming to the end of its lifespan. Uh, the Ironwood Circle, uh, Commercial Development, again, has a lot of older buildings in it. You could start to see how places like this, you put a few properties together and you can start to see them becoming, uh, development sites. There's also a large area of large lot, single-family housing, you can, again, these are, some of these properties are over an acre to two acres. You put two or three of these together, you could potentially put together a multifamily, uh, apartment complex, there's already one across the street on, uh, Rosemary Lane. So you could start to see how this area has a lot of potential for redevelopment over time. Together, you know, the orange areas and the gray areas start to represent the, a lot of what, um, could pot, could potentially happen, what is going to happen and what could potentially happen over time. Even in the areas that we haven't covered, there are still, there's interest along State Road twenty-three. Who knows what could happen on some of the, uh, commercial properties on Ironwood and Edison as well. So there's, there is a lot of interest in this, in this part of the city. One of the things that we, uh, that back the, um, each Tiff District is a development plan. And so in your packet, you received the existing River East Tiff Development Plan. Uh, what we will be doing with this adjusted, this adjustment is amending the River East Development Plan in a few, uh, important ways. In twenty nineteen, in the summer of twenty nineteen, we did, uh, do a comprehensive update to every Tiff District in the city. We redid every development plan, we adjusted the Tiff boundaries of the, most of the Tiffs in South Bend and went through this adjustment process. So today, what we're asking though is of that very minor adjustment to the River East, so it's not as grand as what we did in summer of twenty nineteen. So the Tiff Development Plan, uh, which is part of this update process, we will be updating the boundary, which we've just shown you, the legal description that defines that boundary, and the property acquisition list, uh, that is associated with the existing development plan. We are in the process of doing a fiscal impact analysis that is being prepared by Baker Tilly. Um, they are here tonight to answer some high-level questions, but that report has not yet finalized. One of the issues that typically comes up, especially when, uh, we contact the landowners in this area, is why are my parcels or my properties being added to the acquisition list, does this mean the city wants to buy my property? The answer is no, we do not want to buy your property. The, uh, however, being on the acquisition list allows the city to, uh, negotiate with property owners in ways that, uh, make it easier for both the city and the property owner to come to, uh, an agreement about the price of property if there is a city project that, uh, may be required. Something that might be like a streetscape project, a park project, a, basically a public good type of project. And this allows the Redevelopment Commission to, uh, negotiate, uh, in more of a sort of market rate way. Otherwise, uh, we're bound by the average of two appraisals for a property and oftentimes that comes in below what people think their property is valued at, so it allows us to have that wiggle room in that, that negotiation space. Uh, one of the things that we did last time and we do intend to do again are two public meetings, uh, to engage those property owners, those fifty-three property owners. Uh, we have two meetings, uh, set for May seventeenth and May nineteenth. Uh, we do this so that we can try to head off a lot of those questions about taxes, about, uh, land acquisition and any other Tiff-related questions that anyone might have. So we go through and talk about what Tiff is, how Tiff is generated, and what it means for their property. In this case, um, we are going to be doing, uh, the public engagement in the weeks prior to the final, um, uh, vote at the Redevelopment Commission, which would adopt, uh, the new, uh, adjusted area and Tiff Development Plan. So today, um, we have, to date, we have, uh, the Redevelopment, uh, Commission has, um, recommended favorably for the Declaratory Resolution and as well as the Plan Commission on the eighteenth. We're here today at council and, uh, public hearing will, or, sorry, the public hearing notice will be published, although these dates are a bit subject to change depending on how things go tonight, but, and we also, uh, can show you here, May seventeenth and nineteenth, where those public information meetings will be held. Uh, we do this again because we're trying to head off those questions that would instead come at May twenty-sixth at the Redevelopment Commission Meeting. Last time we did this, we had the public information sessions, I think, before, uh, council, maybe even further ahead than that. And that time difference between when the public information sessions were and the Redevelopment Commission just led to some confusion. And we think, we hope, that this will allow people to be able to, uh, ask those questions of city staff prior to the Redevelopment Commission, allowing us to, uh, make sure that that meeting runs smoothly and instead of filling this entire room of people who think we're going to buy their property, so. With that, if you have any questions, um, I'm here to help hopefully answer some of them. We also have, uh, Emma from Baker Tilly, who may be able to answer some of your questions regarding the overlapping taxing districts and the potential impacts to those, um, to those taxing districts.
At this time, I would turn to council to see if you have any questions or comments for the petitioner. Councilor Hammond?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Corcoran. The fifty-three unique property owners, how many of those are residential?
Uh, looking at this, it would be very few, the area, let's see if this will work, the area right in here is pretty much the only area that is still, um, residential, a single- a single-family residential in nature.
Is there the potential for property taxes to increase to the point where those folks would have to leave their homes?
So being within the TIF district does not affect one's taxes just by being in or out of the district.
Right, the development does.
The development that comes is what may change the assessed value. Now, the developments that are happening now are happening without any assistance from the city in any way. So those developments are happening without even being within the TIF. The reason that we're doing this is to capture that value so that we can use that incremental revenue to help with projects that may be associated with some of those developments that are happening anyway. Like I mentioned, Venice Street, which is got a lot of issues. I don't think there's a sidewalk or curb down parts of it. The intersection of South Bend Avenue and Charles Street is very wide. We want to maybe narrow that down because the development, the Irish Quarter development, plans on having a restaurant and a cafe. And more and more people are walking up and down South Bend Avenue, Bantam Diner, for instance, perhaps crossing the street at Edison to go to other restaurants on the other side. So the incremental revenue helps us, you know, look at these infrastructure improvements that do help those particular developments, but also add revenue to the entire River East TIF area that we can use in other areas as well.
And who makes decisions as to how this TIF money is spent?
The Redevelopment Commission.
So not, it doesn't go to the people to decide?
No, I mean, part of it is that the land use that's in place is what is legally able to be done right now. There might be rezonings in the future, though, for instance, I don't, I don't know that. Like I said, the only things that we do know are those areas in orange. But you can see the interest in this area. And by us adjusting the TIF, we're able to get out in front of that and capture that revenue so that we can use it within this area and hopefully as well, well, definitely within the balance of the River East TIF as well.
Thank you.
Counselor Lee.
Yes, I have two questions for the people that may be watching at home who may not be as savvy on understanding what TIF is. Can you, can you explain what a tax increment finance, what, what that district is?
Sure. So it's hard to describe very quickly, but essentially when a TIF is overlaid across part of the city, when new development happens within that district, the incremental growth in taxes goes back to a fund, in this case, the River East Development Area, where, and the, the base level taxes, i.e. the taxes that are happening right now, continue to go to the other taxing agents like the county, the school corp, transpo, the library. So when new development happens, the increment above what is happening, the increment of taxes that are above today gets captured in, in this fund to allow us to invest in local public improvements within, in this case, all of the River East TIF district.
All right, so to make it where everybody can understand it, if we don't expand this and new development happens, we miss out on the opportunity to receive that, that revenue.
That's correct.
The people who already benefited from it would be the county, the schools, and what was the other one?
The library.
And the libraries. And transport? Okay. So by us expanding this, it gets ahead of what's getting ready to happen. If people redevelop in that area and the taxes go up, that money now goes back to further redevelopment in that area. But if we don't do this now, we miss out on that opportunity of new, of that incremental income.
Right, so we miss out on, we miss out on the, yeah, on the newly generated tax revenue. That revenue, we have used, again, for local public improvements like Howard Park. That helps pay the bond off for Howard Park. We have Sites Park, for instance, that will be hopefully going, starting in construction, maybe towards the end of the year. So streetscape projects, that's typically how we use the majority of our TIF funds.
And so it's important for us to understand that because as this, if we get ahead of it, as the redevelopment happens, we got the opportunity to capture those, that revenue to make, make the area better.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other counsel?
Yeah, because I, I'm confused now. The money that he's talking about, the new dollar, only stays in that area, am I correct?
That's, that's correct. The whole, it goes within all of the River East TIF area.
Until the sunset of that particular TIF district sets, right?
Yes.
So that money that we're talking about won't be shared with the rest of South Bend. It will be shared for that, within those boundaries of wherever that TIF district is at, right?
That's right, so it's revenue generated in.
So we never miss out on the opportunity for anything. We're just actually doubling up the redevelopment of that particular area. So when we talk about 80th Street Commons, because this is a real conversation, I'm glad you brought it up, how the city invested close to $300 million in infrastructure dollars. You weren't here, I was. That money never returned back to the taxpayers and the citizens of this city, across the city. It stayed in that one area. While that area continues to reproduce more dollars to redevelop more and more, while it's shiny and pretty and it gives great services to that area, the taxpayers from the west side of the city that helped produce that is night and day. So there is a disadvantage and there is also an advantage as well of a TIF district. And so we need to be clear that TIF districts don't always pan out, excuse me, don't always turn out the way that we desire them to do. Because somebody has to make the initial investment in order for that to happen. And if you make the initial investment for something to happen, you actually want something back from that. You don't get anything back from that, it stays there.
The investment the city made in Eddie Street Commons and the TIF that's collected from it go to pay back the bond that was issued for the parking garage. So the development then, the, the development does pay for the bond. And once that's paid off, then the obligation to the TIF is.
Of course, but it still stays in that area, that's what I'm saying to you. It self-contains itself, it stays there. So the money that was initially invested, I was here when, I actually voted for that. That was 2008. It stayed there, that money stays there. And after that bond is paid for, based upon when that sunset clause is, it continues to stay there. We on the west side, or on the south side, or north side, do not get to share in that development dollar that has happened over there on the east side. I'm not saying it's wrong or it's right, but that's just explained in the TIF district.
The River West TIF does cover much of the west side, downtown. And so every new development in downtown, for instance, contributes to the west, the River West TIF.
I'm not bumping up against it, I'm just saying that there's pros and cons to it, sir. I'm not saying it's wrong or it's right, but there's pros and cons to it.
Thank you, anyone else?
At this time, I would open it up to the public. During the public portion of each proposed resolution, members of the public are invited to address the council. We ask that you please give your name, address, and comments on the bill. If you have any questions, they will be addressed by the petitioner or the presenter during their rebuttal. Each member of the public is limited to five minutes, with those speaking in favor going first, followed by those in opposition in a five-minute rebuttal for the presenter of the bill. Clerk Jones, do you see anyone wishing to speak in favor of Resolution Number 22-19?
At this time, I don't see anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 22-19.
Is there anyone in the general public? If not, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition of Resolution 22-19?
There is no one from the virtual public wishing to speak in opposition of Bill 22-19.
Thank you. At this time, the public portion is now closed. I will turn back to council for final statements. If not, I will entertain a motion for passage.
I'd like to move Bill 22-19 for passage.
Clerk Jones?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Nay.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Bill 22-19 has been adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bill's on first reading. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 1522 a first reading?
1522, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana to vacate the following described property, alley between lots four and five of Furbinger's First Edition.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to send Bill 1522 to Public Works and Property Vacation in public hearing in third reading on May 9th.
So moved, second.
It has been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries. Clerk Jones, would you give Bill 1922 a first reading?
1922, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at northwest, at the northwest corner of Corby Boulevard and Hickory Road, council managed district number four in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Motion to send Bill 1922 to Planning Commission on 5/16 and to zoning in public hearing in third reading for May 23rd.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion's carried. Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill 20-22 a first reading?
2022, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, supplementing and amending ordinance number 9722-06, ordinance number 9968-09, and ordinance number 10142-11 pertaining to the City of South Bend, Indiana, variable-rate economic development revenue bonds, series 2007, High Genesis Project. The bonds approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of a third amended and restated trust indenture, a third amended and restated loan agreement, and other documents related to, to the bonds and authorizing proper officers to do all other things deemed necessary or advisable in connection therewith and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to send Bill 20-22 to personnel and finance for May 9th.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion's carried. At this time, I would turn to see if there's any unfinished business from the council. Counselor Hammond?
Yes. Just a brief follow-up to questions that came up during the Affordable Housing Meeting under residential neighborhoods. I've been in conversation with the County Auditor's Office regarding the tax sale concerns. There was a limited ordinance passed downstate which allows only Marion County to give priority to local bidders for property purchasing. No other county in the state is allowed to make such restrictions. So the option would be for us to find a way to convince the powers that be in the county to take tax sales offline. So that's going to require getting the approval of the treasurer, the council, and the commissioners. So anyone that has relationships, I'd ask you to use those at this time. Two other things, I would also request an update from whoever this falls under on the Education Committee through the South Bend Community Schools and the Common Council. That resolution was passed a long, long time ago. And also an update on the selection of the Citizen Review Board members.
Thank you. I will make sure that Counselor Warner gets the information request for the School Board Education. And I believe that he is sending out an email, if not tonight, but tomorrow, about the update of the CRB. I just concluded the first round of interviews last week and the clerk's office is finishing up putting all of the demographics together. And so we will have an executive session and the public comments according to the timeline of that. So that is coming very quickly.
We can't do an executive session for the board.
We're doing, I'm sorry, we're having a meeting about the, we're having a public meeting and we're having a meeting about the demographics as it's outlined in the ordinance. So I think that email is going out, if not today, tomorrow, by Counselor Warner about the CRB update. And like I said, the clerk's office is finalizing the demographics for all of the council to have and then for us to push it out to the public. And your second request, Counselor Warner, she had asked for an update for the Joint School Board.
Education Committee.
Education Committee team. Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll open it up and ask if there's any new business from council, Counselor Tomas Morgan.
Thank you, President McBride. Just a couple reminders and announcements. On Wednesday, April 27th, at 5:30, we'll be holding a meeting of the Community Investment Committee. They will be providing a briefing of the, of DCI's 2021 Annual Report and as well share updates and highlights from DCI's pandemic recovery efforts. And finally, talk briefly about the department's leadership transition. And then on Thursday, April 28th, at 5:00 PM, we'll be having an Information Technology Committee meeting. And that'll be an update on cybersecurity training and measures and an update on the open Wi-Fi public nominations and selection criteria. The department is interested in hearing committee and council feedback on, on the criteria and next steps for open Wi-Fi. Thank you.
I would just like to give a reminder of the mayor, state of the city, tomorrow at 6 o'clock at the main library downtown. So all council, of course, is welcome to attend and have seats reserved for that tomorrow. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, thank you. Today, I took a field trip over to cultivate food rescue. Great facility, great services, something that's obviously needed beyond what I even thought, given the amount of poverty that's here in the city, the amount of children that deserve, and not only deserve, but also needs fresh foods or meals daily that this business is providing. So as I was leaving from my tour, the gentleman that I was there with, he extended an invitation for me to volunteer at some point. I told him I would, definitely would. But he also said, well, why don't you call and talk with the rest of your council colleagues and see if they would do the same? Said it'll probably be a great exercise. So I told him, I didn't know, I couldn't tell anyone else what to do, but I could open the door for it, I'm going to volunteer. And I was extending an invitation to the rest of you, if you were interested in going over there and packaging food, freezing it, packing it up and getting shipped out, or getting it ready to be shipped out to some of the service providers here in this area. Many of the foods go to many of the schools in Elkhart and South Bend and some of the other areas, surrounding areas as well. So they do a pretty big job and a big necessary job. So your job volunteering, they can tell you about it. But at the very least, you'll be breaking down food and packaging or help putting it on crates so it can be shipped out, so, or something in between. But I think it will be a great exercise for the council, individually or collectively, to go and help them out for a day. They, they do a lot of volunteer. They, they do a lot of volunteer hours and that's how they get most of their product out on a daily basis. So I think it will be pretty healthy to go over there and just see what's going on. I also wanted to, and I have the card here, the lady's name is Shelley, I want, Al, Al Wine. I can send an email out to all of you with the name and phone number on here if you're interested. The other thing I wanted to bring up, and I wanted to get it during unfinished business, but I wasn't fast enough. That resolution that was here earlier about housing authority, the other reason why it was up in front of you is because there was a paper article, newspaper article, talking about the redevelopment efforts of the housing authority. Dr. Lambert was one that was being interviewed. She stated that the property itself was being redeveloped and worked on with McCormick and Baron, which is out of St. Louis. I called McCormick and Baron. There was no record of South Bend Housing Authority working with them or even having a signed contract with them that said that they were doing redevelopment efforts for the property on Western Avenue.
Can I ask for a point of order? Can?
What, for me talking to you?
No, 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 about the housing authority that's been, is this, can we talk? I didn't know if we can talk about, I'm, no, I'm not saying that you're not, I'm, for my clarification. Yeah, I'm asking because we talked about the housing authority as a bill today and I don't know, can we talk about that? And this is educating me, so no disrespect, I need to know.
You didn't want to cut me off? It is.
Parliamentarian, could you?
What is he going to tell you, yes or no? And I gotta talk about something else? I mean, this is nuts.
If it was on the, if it was on the agenda about the housing authority, so can you please?
I'm taking it to another level, I'm not staying there. I really am not staying there, I'm trying to give you another understanding of what's happening.
Parliamentarian, can I turn to you, please?
Excuse me, to the extent that we're talking about the resolution that is not unfinished business, it's finished business, or to the extent that it's going beyond that, it would, I think, legitimately fall
Thank you.
under unfinished business, is furthering the discussion.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
But I'm allowed to give context to what I was trying to say.
Absolutely, I, no, no, I just wanted to make sure before we move forward because when you started out with the context of the housing authority, Mr. Davis, I didn't know where you were going, so I needed clarification. If you're moving beyond our discussion, absolutely.
You got it, Sharon. I'm done, you got it.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'll turn to the privilege of the floor. Unless there's any other new business that a council would like to address. Thank you for your clarification.
There's no one in the virtual audience that is, well, wait a minute, there's Jordan. Jordan, if you would unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan, you would have three minutes to address the council. And individuals cannot be permitted, this is for the general audience, address topics which the council have heard previously on the agenda. And if the council president may assign a topic raised by an individual due on the privileges of the floor to the appropriate council member and to request the city clerk to contact a member of the city administration for review and topics assigned shall be responded to at the next scheduled council meeting. Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, Jordan Geiger, 424 South Michigan Street, Unit 660, South Bend, Indiana, 46601. I just wanted to, to share that I'm hoping that, I, I want to say that first, I attended the residential neighborhood committee meeting. And I was hoping that we would get more feedback from the questions that community members had submitted at some point. I don't know if that'll happen Wednesday, but I was just curious if the council could update us on where the administration is with getting back with you all about those questions.
Thank you, I will follow up with Chair White. Is that all, Mr. Geiger?
Yeah, that was it, yep.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, is there anyone else?
There is no one else.
No one in the audience, but this said, this meeting stands adjourned. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, President.